All right, welcome everyone to tonight's school committee meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we get started on the agenda, there are a couple of things. I'd like to ask everybody to stand, please. And we're gonna have a moment of silence for two reasons. Mr. Clancy, do you want to talk about the first one?
Sure. As all of you are aware, as a school community, we lost a member a few weeks before school started this year. Deb Boudier unexpectedly passed away. Deb touched the lives of many students with her time that she spent with us. Always had a smile on her face and started every day with the passion of doing the best. I'm going to miss Deb as the entire community will. I used to run into Deb every now and again at Market Basket in Hudson, and I always look forward to our conversations, and that's something that I'm gonna truly miss.
And the other reason we have a moment of silence is it's obviously September 11th. The flags are at half-mast throughout town and throughout the Commonwealth and the nation, so I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Deb Boudier and also reflect on 9/11. All right, thank you. While we remain standing, if we could have, Darryl, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right. So we're gonna jump into the agenda. This is kind of the kickoff meeting for the new school year. We've been back in school for, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven days now. I know I'm happy, my house is happy. Kids are happy, but I'm happy. We have some new members we'll talk about in a few minutes, and we do have a recognition we're gonna do later. But before we do that, let's start with some of the plain business. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda minutes for July 14th, 2014, vote to bills and payroll?
Make a motion to do the consent agenda minutes and vote to bills and payroll?
You need a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? Thank you. All right, the next is introduction of a new school committee member. Paul Avella ran for selectman in the end of his second year of a three-year term and won, so we had a spot to fill. And on Monday night, we had a joint meeting with the board of selectmen. It was a joint appointment between the board of selectmen and the remaining school committee members. We had two candidates, Mike Mazzoni and Mark Rombacher. It was a difficult decision. It was a very good interview process and discussion. Both candidates were clearly vested in what happens in Littleton Public School System and clearly were able, were gonna be able to, you know, contribute to the process. After deliberation between both boards, we took a motion and a vote, and Mike Mazzoni was appointed to fill out Paul Avella's term. So Mike, welcome to the board of, excuse me, the school committee. And you've got one year to fill out Paul's term, and then that seat will be open along with mine in the spring. Welcome to the board. Do you have any opening comments or?
I don't. I'm excited. I want to, you know, thank all the members who were there at the school committee and the board of selectmen for having some faith in me. It's exciting to be back working with the Littleton Public Schools. I enjoyed the time when I was there, and I'm looking forward to at least another year.
Excellent. All right, we're glad to have you. It's always easy to run with five and four. We actually had to defer a couple of votes today in that last ring, so now we won't have to do that anymore. All right, next on the agenda, interested citizens. If you're interested citizens, please step up to the podium and identify yourself, and we will hear what you have to say.
Good evening. I'm Diane Croire. I live at 74 King Street. I am also your field hockey coach at the high school level. The reason I'm here this evening is for you to take into consideration allowing the sixth graders at the middle school level to participate. I'm afraid of the numbers that we have right now at that level and fearful that we're gonna lose our program. Our program's been around for many years, and we've always been very, very successful. Several years ago, this committee took a vote because of other sports, not just field hockey, but mostly because of basketball, because there were so many children interested in the sports, and so they decided that the sixth graders would no longer be eligible. I'm here tonight to ask you, in a future meeting, to take it into consideration and look at it. I can come up with statistics for you if you would like at, you know, a future meeting and go over, you know, because most of the surrounding towns that do the middle school level do allow their sixth graders to participate. The MIAA rules are kids that are under the same principle are allowed to participate. So it's not an MIAA rule, it's a Town of Littleton School Committee decision. So I'd like you to take that into consideration and look at it in the future.
Just a point of clarification, you're asking for them to play on the middle school field hockey team?
That's correct. That's correct.
Not the high school team?
No, 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 not at the high school.
Trying to keep enough numbers at the middle school level to allow a team to exist?
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't think that, if you look at all the other programs, they have theater programs. Soccer obviously has them from the time the kids are five years old that they're playing. They now have lacrosse, you know, at the park and rec level. We don't have field hockey at the park and rec level. We don't have any theater programs other than our middle school level. So we're really, you know, we're struggling this year. She has 13 players, and that's it between the seventh and eighth.
You field 11 at a time and that's all?
11 at a time, and actually, one of the girls actually is hurt, so now they've got one person, so.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Well, in terms of a school committee policy over here, we don't have a policy that says grade sixes cannot participate. It's an administrative school-based policy. My understanding is we have this settled.
Yeah, I'm actually surprised you're here on this.
So I'm surprised that you were not informed of that, because I caught wind of this two days ago, and I had a conversation with both principals and the AD, and they said things were squared away, so.
I just got an email from Mike.
Okay.
Not to let the bag out of the, the...
Cat out of the bag.
Cat out of the bag, that's what I was looking for tonight, but we all have...
It's all set.
Okay, great.
Principal Harriet just...
Yeah, I think you're good.
Great. Awesome. All right. Love to hear it. That is a relief. Really appreciate it, I, you know.
Yeah, I think it might have caused some confusion on what we recorded.
Yeah, okay. Okay, excellent. Thank you, Dylan.
All right, thanks. Can I just ask a question? Diane, you're all set, thank you, of the administrative. So we're talking specifically sixth-grade girls playing field hockey. At this point, are we contemplating allowing sixth graders to participate in other...
Boys soccer and girls field hockey.
Boys soccer, and we're doing it specifically to support the pro, the numbers?
Only when we're, only when we're looking at the numbers issue.
Okay.
And so, this is my fifth year, we've never done this before in my time here.
Okay.
So, you know, and we won't have to normally, but in circumstances like this, we want to field the team, you know. And because of injuries and because of the size of the team, it's tough to differentiate. I mean, we had a boy in the team that scored with a concussion, not related to soccer, but that brings us down, so in both of those sports, we're gonna be dealing with that.
You know, athletic participation is something that's near and dear to my heart. It's something that I've kind of talked about fairly extensively during my time on the school committee. You know, personally, I think it's appropriate in Littleton not to have the sixth graders participate. I think we all recognize that even though they are in the middle school, they're still not, you know, fully middle school. Their classes are presented differently. They are kept in, you know, a separate part of the building, and they're not intermingling during the school day with the older kids. And there, I think we can all agree that there is a distinction between a sixth grader and a seventh grader. It seems like it's only a year, but it's a big year for a lot of kids in terms of pre-adolescence to adolescence and things like that. So, you know, I think it's appropriate not to have them play, other than in a situation like this where it's on a case-by-case basis to support a program. I know that there are other schools that may do allow their sixth graders to play. That's their decision. But I think in Littleton, I think we've been lucky and fortunate that we have such a great level of participation that we haven't faced this issue. So I'm happy for that. I have no problem personally with the fact that we're gonna do this on a case-by-case basis. I just think it's appropriate to only do it on a case-by-case basis. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments or points of view on that?
I think it's not just, as you said, a developmental issue, but it's also quite, you know, physically, the younger kids are smaller, and so this rule, you know, might even keep them safer to some extent, although I'm, you know, confident that when we do make these exceptions, they're in the best interest of the kids, so it's just a good idea all around, I think.
I'm sure the coaches are cognizant of the difference, and they'll coach appropriately and...
Exactly.
All right. Well, I'm glad that worked out for everybody. Thank you.
Quick action.
Yeah. All right, any other interested citizens? All right, seeing none. We're gonna go to the recognition. We will pass on number one for the moment. We're gonna pass on number two for the moment. School reports, Bobby Morris, not here yet. Recognition of the custodians.
We're moving right along here this evening, I can see. Our custodians certainly are worthy of some recognition this evening. As all of you know, our schools are used during the summertime virtually every day, and somehow, we manage to create a schedule that allows us to strip and wax all the floors and do some painting and get the schools ready so that our students and staff can turn them with a great deal of pride. You know, a first appearance, first impression is very important. So I really want to commend our staff. We don't have a lot of them, but they work tirelessly to make sure the job is done. And the way nature works this year, when we actually did have some time without people in the building, I think it was one of the, it was the hottest days of our summer. So only one of our schools has air conditioning, so they were slugging away in very, very hot temperatures. Our schools look excellent. One of my pet peeves when I walk into a school first of the year is I like that shine on the floor so you can see your reflection, and there isn't a school in our district that doesn't have that quality. So I'm very proud of our staff and the way our schools look.
And just for sort of edification, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have full-time custodial staff during the year, during the day, at the middle school and the high school.
All four schools.
Of course, but the middle school and the high school are, they are district employees, correct?
Yeah, so there's a full-time employee day at Shaker Lane, Russell Street, and middle school.
And then at night, we use contract employees at...
At those schools.
Yeah, at the Shaker Lane and Russell Street.
And middle school.
And it's those, in the middle school.
Right.
But it's those full-time district employees that are putting themselves out in the summer to do all that work. We don't use contracting services.
No, they help supplement our people as well.
But, I mean, you know, as we move through the buildings, we meet those guys. And frankly, my kids know the custodians sometimes better than they know some of the teachers, you know, because they see them every day.
Right.
And those, those men and women have a great interaction with it. And you can see the fact that they're district employees, vest them in the process, and you can see the impact that it has on the district. You know, it's a lot different than when it's a contract service, where we're just coming in to fulfill the, you know, the terms of a contract and get out the door.
Yep.
So I appreciate the recognition. It's obvious that there's an impact there and...
Yep. And this year, we have two new custodians, one starting at middle school within the week. We had a resignation, and one has been there for, at Russell Street for just a couple of weeks, but he's already made a big difference to the school, so.
Excellent. Next on the list for recognition is our technology team. We have what I call a skeletal staff, but they're mighty and very well-prepared for the challenges that our district has. We've been very fortunate with the support of our community and staff to move forward with technology in our district. We just finished our last school, Shaker Lane, this summer with an upgraded network and a wireless system, which allows us to truly embrace technology so that we can have multiple devices running at the same time. Our teachers have conceived professional development, a lot of it with their own desire, and we have some great things happening in our classrooms. And again, technology isn't meant as a replacement, it's meant as an enhancement to further engage our students in the excitement of learning. They had to re-image all of our computers. As all of you hopefully know, we have Mac platforms which create much greater stability. As a result, our staff, we need less of them, thank goodness, and they can spend their times helping teachers integrate technology into their respective classrooms. They also managed to offer Tech Wednesdays during the summer, so they had a program of courses and software areas that they looked at, and we had quite a turnout during the summer months. You know, without obviously offering pay to come to these sessions, it was all free and out of interest. So again, I think our technology staff does a wonderful job, and they certainly deserve recognition this evening.
Yeah, I think it's a different job than it was a few years ago, and it was much more centralized now. It's, you know, instead of dealing with, you know, email and centralized type stuff, it's dispersed into the classroom. And you hit on, Kelly, the training the staff and being able to get, have the district take advantage of all the emerging technologies and the impact it has on education, you know, it means a lot. We can't survive without it these days. So for them to show that kind of initiative, you know, goes, has a broad impact and is very important.
It's a dual, or they do a lot of technology integration, working with the teachers, so.
And speaking of technology, as I was driving here this evening, I received a message. And obviously, like a good driver, I didn't try to read it, but as I was getting out of the car, coming in, I'm not sure whether we have somebody that was able to send out a district-wide message with some subject material about fees, et cetera. I don't think there's any validity to it, but to be quite honest with you, I haven't had a chance to even read it yet. So I just saw the heading and a little piece of it. So after the meeting tonight, we'll get to the bottom of it, and if it is fictitious, we'll be sending out that message to all of our parents first thing tomorrow morning. And perhaps Principal Branko can maybe look at his emails, see if you received anything.
I don't, I don't have it.
I, I got it as a parent. I didn't get, I haven't had a chance to look at it either, but I did get it.
So just to assure the public, we'll deal with that first thing in the morning if it is fictitious, and I think it is, but again, I haven't read the whole thing, so. Next, I just have another, just two quick more recognitions. My administrative assistant, Dorothy Malone, as you're aware, fingerprinting has become mandatory in the state for staff that work with public school students. A big job, a big add-on to what we're doing at Central Office. We've managed to get everything in place in terms of processes and forms. And we're also fortunate to actually get a portable unit out here on September 25th, and 90 of our employees, which was the limit, signed up to get fingerprinted, so they just have to walk down the street and they'll have the whole process done. And on that note, I'd also like to thank the school committee for their support in paying for the cost of fingerprinting. It's a one-time event, but certainly, it's a state mandate. It has a lot of validity, but it's nice that our school committee came forward and said that this is a cost that our staff shouldn't incur, so thank you very much.
I don't want Mike to flip out. We're not actually paying for it ourselves. We just authorized the payment in the budget.
I thought the newest member would be paying for it.
You can just take it out of my school committee paycheck.
There you go. All right.
He catches on fast.
We wouldn't do that to you. And the very last one is just acknowledgement of the 300th committee for putting on some wonderful festivities in celebration of Littleton's 300th birthday. The parade was phenomenal this weekend. It was just so impressive. The organization that went into making that happen was, was just really, really a pleasure to watch.
I'd just like to tag on a recognition. The parade was kicked off by the high school band.
Yes.
Who put in a tremendous amount of work over the summer. They were one of the parties that was in the building on a regular basis at night in the summer, one of those non-air-conditioned buildings. They are a great band, but they, I don't think they've ever really been a marching band before, so they had to, you know, get their musicianship, keep it moving forward, which they already have taken care of, but then they had added the whole marching thing, and they did a great job of kicking it off. They looked like they were pretty proud of themselves, walking up by King Street, leading out what the biggest parade in the history of Littleton, so.
They did a fantastic job. It was really nice to see Littleton, Colorado, travel here and take part in the parade also.
And Littleton, New Hampshire.
And Littleton, New Hampshire as well, so. It's a great day. And just as we were finishing, Lisa Boone walked in, and Lisa was in... Lisa Boone walked in. And Lisa was instrumental. I saw her in action at the parade. And she was a busy lady, making sure everybody was toe in the line, or they were ordered properly and started lining up and, you know, began the parade in sequence. So, it wasn't an easy task, but it was just tremendously done. So, thank you. And that's it for recognition this evening.
All right. Next, we have presentations. We have one presentation, Project 351. Principal Branko.
And just before Principal Branko starts, Project 351, it's finished its fourth year under the leadership of Governor Patrick. It's a tremendous program that provides a leadership opportunity for one of our grade eights every year. And I asked Principal Branko to bring a couple of students that have experienced the program and talk with you this evening a little bit about it. Something that we haven't given enough attention, and I thought tonight was worthy of spending some time on it.
Nice timing.
Shut up just in time.
Perfect timing.
Whatever you guys want. I'll get out, I'll get off the mic when it's too early. All right. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Oh, yeah. That's fantastic. All right. Huh? Well, one's overdressed, one's underdressed. You're good. We're in the middle.
Just a cross country meet.
Did you win?
Boys did not, but the girls did.
All right. All right. Well, as my A.D. in Chelmsford used to say, we're with you win or win. So, make it happen. So, thank you for having us here tonight. I will introduce my guests in a second. Project 351, I promised I wasn't going to read all these slides because there's a lot of information on them, so you guys can look at them. And I will also post this on the middle school website after this, in case people would like to take a good look at it. I am going to read the first slide, because that's really the bulk of the program, and that's kind of historical information. And then I'll turn it over to these guys a little bit. Project 351 was originally convened as a one-day event by Governor Deval Patrick for his 2011 inauguration. More than 400 eighth graders representing every city and town in the Commonwealth united to serve, develop leadership skills, and discuss issues critical to young people and their communities. By the day's end, the ambassadors had impacted the lives of more than 8,000 citizens, gained confidence and capabilities, forged friendships with peers from diverse backgrounds, and committed to build the ethic of service in their communities. The day's success and unique focus on statewide unity compelled the formation of Project 351 as an independent nonprofit. Project 351 celebrates the ethic of service, youth leadership, and the diversity of our Commonwealth. Its vision and mission is made possible by strong partnerships with educators, nonprofit organizations, civil leaders, and the investment and active engagement of corporate citizens and foundations. So, what's pretty cool is this started as a one-shot, let's try to engage some young people in the world of leadership. And now, here we are, four years later, where the two guests that we have tonight represent two of the four people that Littleton Middle School sent. And you pick an ambassador from every middle school in every town in the Commonwealth, which is where we get our 351. That's apparently how many school districts we have, give or take. So, it's one eighth-grade representative chosen by the eighth-grade faculty at that school and the leadership team. And the eighth-grade ambassador student is selected by his or her school for their exemplary ethic of service and demonstration of Project 351 values of humility, compassion, kindness, and generosity of spirit. And the selection of quiet leaders and unsung heroes is often encouraged. And one ambassador is selected for each town in Massachusetts. So, we've done this for four years since the inception of the program. And Ethan Rambacher, who is standing next to me tonight, from the senior class, correct?
Yes.
Wow, my old, that's awesome. He represents the very first person to have been nominated and represent Littleton Middle School. Two guests could not be here tonight. Erin Dory, who is in the junior class, was selected in 2012. Emily Sullivan, who's in the sophomore class, was selected in 2013. And Lexi Rock, who is now a budding freshman at the high school, was selected to represent us last year. The criteria for selection was simply that, the only part of this is simple, is the first part, that you have to be a member of the eighth grade. Second criteria is that you have demonstrated leadership in service and volunteerism. Next is strong academic standing, but they make a point to not limit this opportunity to leading academic performers, because the service ethic is the primary consideration. And that ties in very nicely with the middle school philosophy of developing well-rounded students and citizens. Also, the next category is mature, responsible, sensitive, and able to engage with a diverse population of students and leaders. They're looking for someone with high personal standards and aspirations for success, and obviously family support to make sure that this could happen and they could get through the program. So, these four students who were chosen, obviously, by the will of their eighth-grade teachers and leadership team at the middle school believed that they had met that criteria. And then also in your slides is their vision and their mission and their values. But what I really would like to talk about a little bit, and have these guys step up to the mic about, is to really talk about the experience of going. So, as I jump through a little bit to these slides, you'll see that the January launch day is the most important part of this program. It really kicks the entire thing off. And the January launch marks the beginning of the ambassador's year-long term of community service, leadership development and enrichment. And that happens on Martin Luther King Jr. weekend every year. So, they tie it in to Dr. King's philosophy of service and giving back to the world and to the community. So, you can go whatever order you want, but maybe talk a little authentically about what that launch day was like, what your experience there was like. And then I'll kind of talk us through the fact that you have had other opportunities over the course of the years after that. And then you can step back in if you want.
All right. So, like Dr. Branko said, I'm Ethan Rambacher. I went in my eighth-grade year four years ago. And it was, it was a pretty unique experience. I got to meet lots of other people, work with a lot of other people who are also very committed to service, many of them much more than I am even. And it was unique, not only to work with other people who are like-minded in service, but also just to get out and help. I believe, I helped at the Blackstone School, this is going back, but the Blackstone School in Boston. And we helped to paint murals on the walls. And just getting out and, you know, finishing a project also was really rewarding. And it was a lot of fun interacting with people. And like I said, finishing a project and making a difference, so that's about all I have to say.
I'm Lexi Rock. I went in January of this year, which was my eighth-grade year. Going there, it's really like scary at the beginning, because you don't know anyone you're going with at all, because they're all from different towns. But throughout the day, they like introduce you to everyone, and you're assigned to teams based on leaders throughout United States history. And you meet all your team members, and then you're all sent off to different locations throughout Boston to help underprivileged people. I went to a Boys and Girls Club and ran a free carnival for younger children. And I also made care packages for people who couldn't get those supplies by themselves. And...
Excellent. So, in your slide presentation, I also gave you just a quick schedule of what that day looks like. So, I won't go through it, you know, ad nauseam here, but you can see that there's a variety of opportunities that these guys got to go through in that one day. What I think makes this really an interesting program, though, is it's not just about a one-shot day program, and then you go back to your town and you're done. The ambassador's journey takes you through a one-year calendar, and that includes four cornerstone platforms for development. So, what they spoke to you about was that launch celebration and service day. But they also have other opportunities throughout the year, where the ambassadors are invited to come back to the city and come back to the program and take part in other activities. So, there's a leadership reunion for more skill development and service learning. There are also two statewide service days. They offer a six-week leadership development program. And then they also encourage us to come back and do locally-based service and peer engagement programs to showcase your local leaders in your community. So, I don't know which of you guys have taken advantage of those. I know we've talked a little bit. So, if you want to talk a little bit about that.
So, about halfway through the year in June, they invite you back to, my class went to Gillette Stadium. And you spent the day in Gillette. And you, we made school kits for kids who couldn't afford their own school supplies. And we also walked in honor of Martin Richards, who was killed in the Boston bombing. But then they give you like an hour to go out onto the field and just like see all your old friends again. And you get to be with them, and it's really cool. But also, they have spring service. And this year, we did a clothes drive for Cradles to Crans, which is a nonprofit organization in Boston. And right now, we are starting all fall service. We're doing No Kid Hungry and running a food drive in our local areas. And then also, after all the reunion and service days, they offer you to come back and apply for the Alumni Leadership Council. And I'm in the process of applying for that right now, which is basically, you become part of the true team and not just your class. You get to be with all the classes that have gone through. And you go back to launch day with all the new kids who are coming through, and you go to reunion and, yeah.
I think what's really cool about the program is it gives flexibility for the students to kind of make decisions on what they're going to get out of the program. So, where Ethan went for that one day and probably took a lot out of it, Lexi, who was engaged by some of the leadership opportunities at that level, went back and got to participate more. It's not mandated that you do that. They just continue to offer these programs. And the ultimate goal from the state level is to really invest in these youth and develop as many up-and-coming leaders as possible. And so, we've got two quality leaders, because we both know these kids well. They're out there in the community in a lot of different ways. And so, you've got two leaders in the community. And I would argue that the other two students probably are active in the community as well, in a lot of ways. So, I think, one, it speaks to how in tune we are in Littleton with our kids, that we nominate kids that we know are going to rise to the occasion and become young adults in the world of leadership. But then it also offers some nice balance and opportunities for these guys to kind of spread their wings in a much more global sense. One of the things that the program advocates for, that we have not done well at the middle school, and this is presenting tonight actually allowed me to kind of reflect upon this a little bit, is these are the next steps for the program that I'd like to throw out there, that we'd like to talk about at the middle school. One is that we'd like to develop ways to stay connected with the past ambassadors. Honestly, until I was asked to present, I'm embarrassed to say publicly that I never, I never really asked these guys about it. So, much comes across our desk sometimes, that we want to provide great opportunities for kids, that we throw stuff out there to you guys, and we say, "Go, go, go." And great parents and families run with that. And then sometimes, we just don't take a breath to say, "Hey, how was it?" And so, I think that's really important for us to analyze programs and opportunities for kids, especially when they're extension programs like this. So, this has kind of been eye-opening for me to make sure that I know how students are reacting to these programs, and did they get the benefit and the bang for the buck out of them. Second is the connection back to LMS. So, we talk a lot in the district about how we're a small district, and we should be able to give and take between all the schools. So, I'd like to kind of lean on people who come out of these leadership programs a little bit more and talk about other ways that we can give back to the school and maybe create homework help sessions for younger kids, or come down and do projects that we need in the schools. And we have lots of leaders from our athletic programs and from our clubs and activities at the high school, and from honor societies. And I just want to make sure we remember the kids that come out of this program as well, and tap them for those leadership opportunities. Also encouraging them to remain engaged with Project 351 as an alumni, so that if they're so inclined, and if they're interested in service or in leadership, you know, whether at school committee or any other type of leadership down the road in their life, to get, to give young people opportunities for service and opportunities to understand the concept of leadership and the hierarchy of it and the politics behind it, and really the good that actually can come out of it that sometimes gets overlooked. I think that's important for our young people today. And finally, to identify an ambassador coach. The program recommends that we do this, and we've never really done this. We've just put it in the hands of good parents and good kids. So, one of the things we're going to do this year is try to identify a staff member at the middle school to be an ambassador coach, who can kind of help the student that we picked this year, go through the program, stay invested in them, make sure that they're getting all the emails and the opportunities that are afforded to them as being selected and nominated for this. Do you guys have any closing thoughts, or are you good? You're good? I really want to thank these guys. I did not give them a lot of notice to come here. And neither one of them went, "Oh, my God," through email. They were very, very good about getting back to me and stepping up. So, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for being part of that first group of people to come through. And I think you, your parents, and Littleton should be proud of the fact that we've got young people who are coming up through the leadership ranks. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. I think Lexi said it, you know, because I was thinking about it, like, she said it was a little anxiety-provoking to go to that first event and not knowing anybody. And I think, you know, Littleton has a lot of strengths in terms of our size. You know, we can be, as staff and families, we can be very integrated into what's going on, because we're small enough to be flexible and understand what's going on on a day-to-day basis. But I think that sometimes that can also create a little bit too much of a comfort for the kids. And I think it's good that some kids are getting out of Littleton at a younger age and realizing it's a little bit bigger world, and dealing with that anxiety and being stronger for having gone through it. So, Lexi, you went through it once already. The next time, it'll be a piece of cake. The third time, you won't even blink. It'll just be happening, you know? So, that's great. Dr. Branko, I appreciate the fact that, you know, you guys, as a staff, are looking for opportunities. And the things that you talked about, you know, trying to, you know, run with it and take it to the next level, that's great. One thing I would offer is, is that it's great to do projects within the community, but if, again, if we can get them outside the boundaries of Littleton, that can be eye-opening and beneficial. And, you know, you don't have to go that far. You know, we're close to, you know, a lot of metropolitan areas, and Boston being one, but there's other ones around here that can be, you know, very beneficial to the kids. So, anybody else have any comments?
Yeah. I'll second what you said. I think that's incredible. Lexi, I want to congratulate you and Ethan for doing that. I'm impressed with the way you spoke in front of crowds. I get nervous when I speak in front of people, and I've been doing it for a long time now. But I think it's huge to do things like Mike was saying, like getting out of Littleton. We have a great school system, but it's nice to get out and do leadership opportunities elsewhere. I think one thing that Alex and I both have in common is we both did the Student Advisory Council, no?
Yeah, for the State Department of Education.
Yeah. And at least for me, I know that was the first time where I had gotten out and was partaking in something like that outside of the school district. And it was huge for me. So, I think it's important to advocate for these types of things and make sure that people are doing it, and that, you're exactly what you said, using them more than just that one program. Because I know, it was almost like you were at the interview that I went, that I took part in on Monday. But one of the things that's important to me is making sure that we're getting students involved in these types of things early. Because, you know, once, I think, I think once you start, you know, it's hard to let it go from there, as Alex and I will both probably say.
And just to follow up on that, the people you meet in these programs, or at these conferences, or whatever it might be, are people you will stay in touch with throughout your life. There are people I met in that program four or five years ago, who, actually hired one of them this summer for a part-time job on a job I was working on. And I, you know, meet them at school all the time and run into them in Boston. And, you know, it's a good network to have, both professionally, personally, academically, and so forth for your entire life. So, take advantage of it. And it's a great opportunity, I think, for Littleton.
All right. Great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to old business. First off, continued discussion of PARC versus MCAS testing for the 2014-2015 school year.
We've had some great discussions on this subject for a few meetings. And we decided in June to see if we had any new information coming into the new year. We had the first deadline at the end of June to commit to either PARC or MCAS. As a school leader with the backing of the leadership team, we talked about the need for our students to be 21st Century savvy and be, let's do that, writing online tests. There's a letter in your package. I did not have it returned in terms of an answer from the state office, but every now and again, I have somebody that works there. So, I...
They are real.
I had an opportunity to question her over supper one day. And the next day, I was able to get in touch with the right people. And after that conversation, I have greater comfort in saying that it really doesn't matter which test we choose to do, because MCAS is being retooled to incorporate the Common Core and 21st Century skill sets. I guess the secondary component that comes to mind for me as a superintendent is our district in grades two, three, eight is adopting NWEA, which is an adaptive assessment. And it's not to strictly test student skills in terms of a sum of evaluation. It's to allow students to progress with their own cognitive abilities. And through the analyzation of test scores, it gives teachers additional tools to individualize instruction. So, it's an online platform. So, they're going to get that practice doing online tests. So, having said that, then as your superintendent, I could go one way or the other with the recommendation. I think we have the best of both worlds right now.
Comments?
Just a question. I saw a bunch of articles on the NASC mailing list. I didn't get a chance to read through them today. There, you just mentioned retooling the MCAS test. What's their schedule on that? Well, it'll be, it'll be done for this year's administration. It just won't be computerized testing or online testing. So, all of the discussion about validating the updated question sets and the other pieces there. So, PARC made a big discussion, not about the technology testing, but validation of the testing methodology in the...
of the testing methodology in the questions there. What you just said is a correspondence of the same kind of process there. Could you help fill in the gap there?
Right, well, I think, sure.
How they can do it in, like, eight months, and retooling an adaptive test is a multi-year process?
Well, they have more than one or two people working in those departments.
Yeah, so did Park.
Yeah, well, Daryl, what's-
I'm just trying to understand, you know.
What's really happened in this case is, I think from the state's point of view, they thought they were on a clear track, and then they ran into a few roadblocks, as we all know. And rather than risk the integrity of the Common Core curriculum development and the reinforcement, or greater time spent on critical thinking and problem solving, et cetera, they decided to make sure that the MCAS test was of the same caliber or similar caliber. I can't stand here this evening and say to you that they're identical and the critical analysis levels are the same, but my concern was that they weren't going to do anything. And they have done something. The computerized test, as you know, was, for me, something that I had grave concerns about if we were going to move into this. And having adopted NWA, those concerns have been alleviated to a certain degree. I mean, we all know, those of us that are a little older than others in this room, that it is a different skill set to write and create on a computer than it is to do it with a pen or a pencil on a piece of paper. It's very, very different, and it takes some adjustment. So our students, as part of what they're going to face upon graduation, it's a skill set that they're going to need, because the minute they continue their post-secondary education, they're going to be immersed in blended learning environments. I mean, that's just a fact of life. So the real question that you need to answer is a school committee, since the state has put it in the superintendent's and the school committee's hands, is to make this determination, is that, does a year reprieve, if it's going to be a year reprieve, is that going to have any effect on our students' ability to be competitive with other students across the state? You know that our data analysis, in terms of our Vision 2020, we're going into student growth percentiles with all proficiency levels, so we're going to be mapping our progress as a district according to our student gains in those student growth percentile ranges. So obviously, we want our students to do the best that they can do. Now, it's only one test, granted, but as the accountability system across this nation continues to grow and not subside, we want to make sure that our students have all advantages humanly possible.
One thing that we discussed in June was how the MCAS, as it currently is, I mean, it's going to be retooled, but the MCAS is very focused on more rote knowledge, what you know and how you can present it in the exam, whereas the Common Core is less about that rote memorization and more about your critical thinking, your ability to handle different questions. Like, maybe you don't know the, all of the information too, but are you able to address it using critical thinking and the information that's presented to you? Do you know if the retooling of the MCAS will shift away from rote memorization to that critical thinking, as Park did?
Well, without being able to see the exam, obviously, that's the indication that they've given me. We have already undergone that conversion in this district. Are we where we need to be in its entirety? No, but we're certainly well along the road of converting our various curriculi to more of an application approach. And I witness that when I go into classrooms, and my principals, in terms of my expectations of their leadership, they're looking for that in classrooms, and it's part of the teacher evaluation process. So we're covering our tracks in that area. So I feel good about where we're heading, in terms of rising, or raising more correctly, the bar of Bloom's taxonomy. So we're at the top of that pyramid when we're introducing concepts throughout our schools. If you recall last year, when we took a look at our advanced learners and MCAS student percentage growth, student growth percentiles, there we go, it actually differs across the nation in terms of what language you use, we were very pleased with where our students fell in terms of the top end of the growth percentages when compared to peers with similar academic performance. So for us, as a leadership team, that was a real affirmation, because it's something that we've been talking about around this table for years, and with SGP's, we're finally able to tease out some reliable data to take a look at how well our advanced learners are actually doing compared to their peers, and they were doing very well. But when we talk to staff, they still want to do better, which is great, and we just have to continue to give them the professional development tools to be able to move forward in those areas.
And we've seen that, or I've seen that over the past year, year and a half, through all the presentations, through the curriculum updates that we've been doing, as well as the revamping of a lot of our programs in the district. My big thought in June, on the Park versus MCAS discussion, was that Park continues that trend, and MCAS is going on 20 years old now. And learning 20 years ago was for jobs that are very different than they will be 20 years from now, when our students taking the exam, whichever exam it may be, will be in the workforce and needing those critical thinking skills. I'm very confident in our district, as you said, in moving towards that critical thinking versus rote memorization approach. I'm less confident that MCAS is doing that. That question was by no means a critical of the district, I think we're doing everything we can do to move along as quickly and effectively as possible, which I think is the right way to go. My concern is that MCAS isn't keeping up, and Park by no means is a perfect test, but my understanding is that Park is more likely to be able to assist us in that endeavor, and align with us in that endeavor, so that the skills we're teaching our students are the ones that are being tested on, rather than our students learning to think critically and being penalized for it on the MCAS.
Yeah, it's interesting when you, I did some research in this area this summer, and the states that actually signed on with the Park initiative were the top performing states in the nation under the known shot left behind law, which was flawed to begin with, but there was a real affinity of those top performing states to lock in the Park, rather than the other alternative exam that's being given. So that also created for me a little greater confidence in terms of the caliber of the Park exam. A lot greater confidence.
Thoughts or comments? It's okay, if you want, at any point, if you feel like you don't have enough information because you haven't been far enough down the process, don't feel like you have to chime in.
Yeah, no, I'm staying, I'm staying, the only thing I'll say is I do think Alex's analysis is right, that if we're going to be teaching students that sort of next generation school of thought, we, you know, shouldn't rely on MCAS to score them that way. Like I said, it wouldn't be fair to penalize them for teaching them something that they're not being tested on.
My thoughts are similar to what I had thought earlier in our earlier discussions, is that, the problem I have is, is that Park, while it may be better, it's still a lot of uncertainty surrounding it. And I think we need to separate Park from Common Core, because there are two distinct things. You know, the Park is a test, it doesn't teach critical thinking, it measures the ability to think critically, and in that way, I think it is a better test than MCAS. However, I hesitate to implement it now, because I think it's foolish to implement something that may very well go away in the very near term. I just don't see the benefit to us in the short term as a district, and the benefit to our students, to risk giving them something that is going to go away. I don't necessarily, I have the same concerns that you do, I don't think that the MCAS is going to be significantly different or better in such a short term. I applaud the fact that they're trying, I think they're recognizing that they're, that they need to move it forward. You talked about it being 20 years old, it's probably overdue, and even if it was supposed to be doing what it already does, it would be better if they were thinking about, I know they do to a degree, but it seems like they've got a little more fire under than they have had in the last couple of years, which is good. You know, in terms of bold tests, they don't teach anything, they just measure. And at this point, I'm perfectly content to stay with the tried and true, and wait until we know exactly what's going to happen. And in this instance, I think we're better off reacting than proacting. I don't, just don't see the benefit of being proactive in this regard. I don't think there's enough of a benefit, I think there is some benefit, and I don't think it would be a waste of time, I know it wouldn't be a waste of time, but I don't think there's enough benefit to really offset the costs to the district, not monetarily, but in time, effort, uncertainty, stress on the staff to introduce it. We talked about how being able to take it online would be, in this short period, to prepare for that could be, you know, kind of arduous for us as a district. So I'm perfectly content to just leave things as they are, allow the process to continue to play out, and if everybody goes to Park, then we'll go with them when it's time to go with them, and it'll give us more time to prepare accordingly as a district. So that's where I stand right now on the whole thing.
And I guess another piece of information is, as we move into the development of DDMs, district determined measures, all MCAS subjects are going to have to use MCAS scores, although we don't get the data in a timely manner to use them, we haven't figured out how we're going to do that yet. But this is going to be the first year of a two-year set of data to have a student impact rating on teachers in terms of student learning or student growth in their respective classrooms. So the MCAS will offer that consistency, if we have one year of MCAS and one year of Park, we're going to create, I know they're statistically intertwined, but there's still some question in terms of the degree of reliability of doing that comparison. And when it comes into giving a rating to a professional in terms of job performance, you want to make darn sure that it's as clear-cut and black and white as possible.
Would that problem arise, should we, let's say we don't, let's say we stick to the MCAS this year, and then next year, all the districts in the Commonwealth jump on Park, would that problem arise next year?
It's like flipping a coin.
So the shift needs to, should we move to Park, the shift would need to happen eventually. Of course, I hear what Mike's saying, maybe we don't switch to Park, maybe the state drops it. I personally don't see that happening, but I can understand how, you know, I can see the possibility that it might, I don't think it's likely, but I can see the chances there.
And I agree with you, and like I say, the point is that I don't see the benefit of assuming that that's going to be the case, and if we're right, and it is the case, what's the benefit of having switched this year? It's one year that we didn't do the Park test, it's not that higher price to pay, and there's a higher price to pay for being wrong, even if it's only a, you know, miniscule percentage probability of being wrong on the assumption. If we are wrong, we'll have more or less wasted our time, and not only time, but the effort in introducing it, that, you know what I mean? That's just the way I'm thinking about it. I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and frankly, I hope that we get a test, whether it's Park or whatever, or revamped MCAS, that stresses all the things, we all agree, that we're going in the right direction, and I'm happy that the district, and you said it, Kelly, that the district in terms of teaching has clearly moved in this direction. And all we're really debating is, how do we measure the effectiveness of that? And, you know, this is only one way, this will never be the way we measure it, it'll be a way we measure it, along with other methodologies, and we've talked about them. So given that we have those other methodologies, and we're making them better and better all the time, I just don't see the overriding need to jump to Park right now, when not everybody else is anyway, you know, so. Sorry, I didn't mean to go off.
That's fine, that's fine.
Just to, you know, close out some of my thoughts here, I think the way the Park tests are, what they're being designed to test, is a better testing methodology than what MCAS is. And if Park was a little bit more mature, I think I'd have a clear decision here. And I think what's, I'm got concerned about over the summer, and even in the recent, you know, reading, you know, whatever, other things going on here, the choice between it is wrapped up in so much emotional garbage, quite frankly, of the arguments on both sides of it, that they're losing focus on work enhancements that need to be made. And I don't want our district to be a pawn in that discussion there, because they're going to have to settle out within the next year or so, what testing methodology they're going to go with, you know, on it. And I guess I'm leaning back towards, I changed my thinking over the summer here, a little bit here. I think the Park test is a better test, however, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with how stable it is for immediate rollout for our district at this point. And that's, you know, sort of a change in my thinking over here on it, you know, I see, and doing the reading, it's still in development, is really what it is, and I'm not sure we need to be part of that experiment as they refine it here.
Seems like we couldn't really make an educated decision without knowing what the changes to the MCAS are going to be, anyway, it seems like that's the biggest uncertainty that we'll face with that.
Or whether or not the state moves on with Park or drops it. I mean, even if we knew that the MCAS retool would make it similar to Park, if we knew 100% sure, which we don't, that the state was moving to Park anyway, I think we could all agree that even if the retooled MCAS was better, or rather equal to the Park exam, if we knew we were moving to Park, I think we'd want to give ourselves enough lead time. But as Mike was saying, even if that uncertainty is very, very little, or rather, that uncertainty is very, very little, it's still a little bit of uncertainty. And you were saying that the cost of making a switch and then being wrong was far greater than any small gains that we might get by making the choice now with moving forward to this Park and being correct. Which I guess leads me to a couple of questions maybe for Kelly, and I'm not sure, again, I know there's not a ton of information coming from DESC about this, even with your inside source there, but maybe you can help me understand this a little bit. If we were to move to Park, I think that would, that could, because we did all the technological preparations this past year anyway, I think that might be a good shift for the district to prepare for a change, which is coming one way or another, whether it's the MCAS retool or the Park. On the other hand, our administrators are, you know, certainly very busy, we heard over the retreat how busy they were with the edival changes going through, which I think is a monumental task, and a good one at that. So what would your assessment be of the cost, time-wise, staff-wise, of moving to Park and being right versus moving to Park, and then the state dumping Park a year later?
I'm glad you asked that. As you know, in June, I was a proponent of Park, and there was no neutrality at that time. And, but I knew the school committee was struggling with what the best thing was to do with the information that you had. When I look at the initiatives that we have this year, when I look at the design of Park as a test in itself, and to extrapolate just a bit, it's not as if we put all the students in a class in one room and administer it at Park, we have to separate them into subgroups according to accommodations, so it requires more staff, more training. It's a far more complex process than administering MCAS or administering NWEA. We do have a lot of initiatives on our plate, and with the implementation of NWEA, we're taxing our tech team. Development of DDMs is a very taxing initiative within this district, considering only 25% of our subjects are MCAS-related. I would think the best move personally that we could make for this district would be to stay with MCAS for this year, and deal with what comes the year after.
If we do postpone that decision until we know more, given that there are so many initiatives going on, placing a lot of strain on our administrative staff, on our tech team, and on our teachers, do you expect that that will lessen through the next year? Or will we be just as busy, and our staff and admin team be just as, have just as much on their plate?
Well, I think what happens when you're implementing new initiatives in the district, you first of all have to develop and understand a process, and as you're going through the process, you tweak it, and ideally, what happens is it becomes a cocated into the culture of the school and the district. And I already see that happening on that initiative. The DDMs, once we teased through really what they were getting at, our teachers are feeling much more comfortable, we're doing a lot of professional development as the year goes on. But I was really pleased when I walked around the first week of school, and I was in the high school, and a number of teachers were coming up to me, telling me they were doing their pre-test. And I was just taken aback, I just really didn't expect that to happen that quickly. But we had started it last year, and we obviously did a great job of coming together as a team and figuring out what we needed to do. So I think it will be established more as routines. Administrators, no matter what they do, it's really hard to keep a balance. And we're going to be watching that closely and give the support that we can, and we've talked about the fact that we may need more support as we move on, but right now, we're not, we're not ready to make that decision. My biggest concern, and I talked about this first day back when I was speaking to the staff, is that- staff, is that we need to ensure that our time and energy is spent on developing top-notch curriculum and instructional strategies. Testing is just one way of testing how good our curriculum is and how good our instruction is. We should not be putting too much time and energy into that one exam. So my message, one of my messages for that day was, let's redirect our focus, and that's a bad word. Let's make sure that our focus is where it needs to be at in developing good curriculum and instructional pedagogy. And once we do that, everything else will fall into place. But if we're not careful, if we keep increasing the intensity of preparation for standardized exams, it doesn't matter what their leader says or what their leadership team says, they're going to feel that pressure on a daily basis, and it could have a detrimental effect in terms of spending their time and energy on what's most important within their respective classrooms. So all those factors, to me, as your superintendent, had me really switch the direction that I had in June and then coming here tonight with a different direction.
The last, very, very close hitting sway to the hold off and wait category, I guess my last thought is, if there is something else big that we foresee coming down the pipeline that would make it more difficult for us to implement Park next year or in two years than this year, then that would be, to me, a reason why we would implement it sooner rather than later. I don't know, I haven't heard of anything that I'm aware of, anything big coming down the pipeline like that that's new.
No. You know, this is really an interesting, or an interesting thing for me to go through as a superintendent. I mean, I've been a leader in a number of states and provinces, and never in my entire career have I ever entered a political debate on standardized assessment. Never. But I've been in this job a few years. And to me, it's a little frustrating, because I've never viewed assessment as the end-all. It was a component of what we do, yet we spend so much time and energy debating the potential political hidden agendas of doing a standardized test beyond the parameters of the individual states. And you know, as a leader, I don't think at the state level, I think at the world level or at the global level. And part of my job as a leader is to help communicate that message wherever I am and to the group I'm with. We need to pull together within this nation and make sure that all of our students are well-prepared and well-served to enter an unpredictable workforce that's globally competitive. So we need to put aside our differences in terms of who has the better curriculum. Hopefully, everybody will have a strong curriculum. We already know we do as a state. But I think we still have an obligation to help other states in terms of preparing their students. So for me, we're fine as a district. There is a bigger picture out there. It's unfortunate that we're involved in this political debate about an assessment when it's really a small part of what we do, but we are. So we just have to move on and feel good about what we're doing for the upcoming year and let the politicians sort this out.
I think you make a good point. You know, if we, and I think we're leaning towards a consensus now that, you know, we'll leave it as it is. But I think just because we decided to do that doesn't mean we can ignore the fact that there are more changes in all likelihood coming down the line. And there's no reason why MCAS wouldn't eventually go online even if it stayed. I don't think it will. I think it'll morph one way or the other, whether it's Park or some other, you know, entity. I think the online part of it is inevitable. So I think the point you're making is, let's not just, it's one thing to put it on the back burner, it's another thing to just put it in the closet and shut the door and not worry about it anymore. And I don't think our staff will do that. I think they'll keep their eye on the shifting landscape and when they get an opportunity to think about, will there be other initiatives that they might be preparing for that gives them an opportunity to say, well, that'll help us when we have to go to online testing as well? So, and in terms of budget priorities and things like that, that's got to be a focus for us, is how do we prepare for those types of things? So I think if we're doing that, I think that's good. I appreciate the comment you made. I think the way I think about it is, we're looking for balance. Testing is part of what we do, but we have to have the right balance, and the balance has to be, as you said, in curriculum and instruction. And if you have the right balance there, the testing will take care of itself to a very large degree, if not altogether. So I think we, as a leader, you know, I'm more, when you say something like that, that makes me feel like you're not getting caught up in the dialogue that's going on. You're going forward the way you need to be, and we'll take care of the rest of that as it comes down the pipe. Anything else, or?
I do like how, as a school committee and as a team, we have definitely excluded those sort of underlying questions about, oh, what's the political agenda of Park versus MCAS? How does that affect the whole political debate? I really like how we've been able to discuss it from a mass, from a perspective of, how does it affect our kids? How does it affect our staff and their ability to help our kids? And how does it affect us as a district? How does it affect your admin team? I think that's the right approach, and I think there's a lot of pressure on school committees, as Darrell spoke to, to become a pawn in that debate for one side or for the other. And I don't think any of us pushing for one or the other today or back in June, we were discussing it, we're falling into that.
I agree.
And I think that's what a lot of school committees have understandably become susceptible to, because there's so much pressure and there's so much attention on this, and usually we don't get that from a state or national level. And all of a sudden, everybody and their neighbor knows about Park and why it's either the end-all be-all or, you know, the worst thing since, I don't know. So I just want to say that as a district, I think we're taking the right approach here, just in terms of assessing where we are and figuring out how to go forward.
I mean, I think you, Darrell, you stated your intentions pretty clearly. I know I have. Chuck, I think, was leaning, had a lot of the same points that I had back in June, so I don't think anything that's come down the line would change his point of view. You sound like you're more than willing to reach a consensus with the rest of us. At this point, I think we've reached a consensus. I don't think we need to take any action, right? I think we're just going to let it roll the way it rolls. And, you know, obviously, if it changes, we'll all know. There's plenty of message board information flying around, and you're plugged in at the state, and you guys are a little bit, a little bit too. So if something changes, we'll know about it, and we'll pick it up again. But I think at this point, we can kind of put this one to rest. And you're right, Alex, it was a good discussion on all the right levels and not on any of the wrong levels, so that was worthwhile in its own regard. So I appreciate that. All right.
Do we have to record a vote to return for the state, or is it just taking lack of response as status quo?
That's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah, sir, we can actually fill the form out and send it in as MCAS. They default as MCAS anyway, so, but we'll probably just send a form in. The next item on business was a continued discussion on, a presentation format on categories of accounts that we would put online. Last meeting, we had a great discussion, and we certainly weren't ready for consensus. But actually, Darrell and I had an opportunity to have a good conversation about what the laws say and what other districts are currently practicing. And the template that was presented to you really, really replicates actually more than a lot of districts are doing. And what I mean by that is, is usually circuit breakers and disclosed and appropriated budget because it's a revolving account, it's not part of the budget. This district, a number of years ago, with the Board of Selectmen decided to do that, which is fine, but it's a bit of an anomaly throughout the state, because there are many other kinds of revolving accounts that we've talked about. Not that I want to speak for Darrell, and I'll certainly Darrell will have the opportunity to state his opinions, but I think after having that conversation, Darrell certainly felt more comfortable about what we had for us. Darrell, I'm going to...
Yeah, so I mean, I, like I said, we had a nice conversation. I also looked at several other districts there, and, you know, the standard practice is to post the, you know, for the ones that do post details, to post the appropriated budget there. And I talked to Kelly about the pros and cons of that. And one that really struck me, and I said all along, I don't want to create a custom report that's not a standard reporting piece there. So I am in favor of us leading ground where it's appropriate, but if it's not a standard practice, then it will just throw more confusion into the process. I don't think that that really makes a lot of sense there. The one area I would like us to maybe think about, and maybe it's not in the, because I think you touched on it with the end-of-the-year statement, that's also included in our packet here, I think it would be useful for, you know, maybe at the close of the books or at the opening of the books, when we do the budget preparation, if we include the whole cost of what we spent to run the schools last year, including the circuit breaker, including all of the fees that we collect, including all of the grants that we get from outside the district. So people have a clear understanding of, even though we're taking a certain amount out of the appropriation, this is really what it truly costs to run this school district there. So when people start saying, well, we got a little bit more here, it's a little reminder that there's other funds that we, if those go away, we still have to offer a lot of those services there, so that it makes sure that people have a nice crisp understanding of what really truly costs to run our school district there. So I guess that would be, I'm fine with the appropriated budget format that we have there, but I just ask for us to consider how we might incorporate some sort of total net cost to run the school report at some point, you know, in each school year.
Alex? So Darrell, you're more comfortable with what we were looking at during the retreat?
Yes. The, you know, I call it the appropriated budget.
Minus, that didn't include the circuit breaker?
Yeah, I remember the discussion was... Like I said, I looked at several of the districts there, and that is the common practice. For, you know, and like I said, there's a lot that don't post at that level of detail, but the common practice is, it's always reference off the appropriated budget.
So this would still include the state categories that we had been looking at during the retreat?
Yes, the eight cost centers that we created, which coincides with the state.
So I'm not proposing that we get a monthly report at this level, and I'm just saying that this is the, you know, the opportunity, when we post the budget, we post it out at that level of detail, but I'm not looking for monthly reporting or monthly updates or any type of reporting against that, because I'm not sure that that's of much value. It's no value to me on here at the eight cost center level is sufficient visibility for me at the school committee level.
Thank you. I guess this is what I was looking for.
You know, the other issue I had was the, you know, trying to strike a balance in terms of level of detail. I think the one that we were looking at, I personally felt had way too much detail to the point where, you know, it becomes meaningless. I think that the eight cost centers we have here are appropriate. I personally don't have any problem breaking this out in other ways, I just don't think down to the level that we had it is meaningful. You know, we could break it down, you know, by building, by, you know, subject matter, you know, English Language Arts versus Math versus E L A, I mean, foreign language, things like that. You know, we can, we can look at that. My concern is, is that I would like to have a robust discussion and a determination of how we want to do that and making sure that it's meaningful before we task anybody to do it, because I don't want to make the staff go through this iterative process.
Time and time again.
Exactly, you know what I mean? So I just want to make sure that we know why we're doing it, why it's going to be beneficial to us and, you know, the public and Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, whoever else would be consuming that type of information. And I think that'd be a great job for the Budget Subcommittee to go after. And, you know, I don't think it'll be a short process, is my point. I don't think we're going to jump out next week in the next meeting and have something in place. I think it'll take months before we get something in place, and then it'll be more months to get it in place with the actual data, but I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to go through.
I agree, and I like that approach.
The only recommendation that I have is, we work very hard in creating a commonality of budget discussion with eight cost centers. Whatever we do, we need to stay within that.
Yeah, that's the way I would be looking at it, is basically, right, you would, exactly. You would, you might start with eight, and then within each eight, there might be some subcategories that roll up and down, but you're always going to tie it out.
Right.
Otherwise, again, it becomes meaningless.
Exactly.
It's just nothing. It's just a bunch of different ways of, you know. So that's exactly the way I, and that's the way professionally I've done it, and I've been taught to do it, because that's the meaningful way to do it. And they always want to know, will that roll back up? And it should tie out every single time. And the tool that gets developed should be easy enough to use that it's just automatic, once you build it, it becomes automatic, that everything is tied out, the form is all worked out, they've been vetted, QA'd, and it's good to go. And as long as you don't tweak it, you should never have to worry about it again. You just run it, and it comes out, and you're confident. That's the big thing. Are we confident this is working the way we expect it to? And once we've verified and QA'd it, we should never worry about that again. So that's got to be a big part of the process.
And it might take a little bit of time to build that report, but once it's built, it's built.
Exactly. Okay. So why don't we do that? Why don't we grab that, and then we'll, because it's time to start to get the Budget Subcommittee meeting, you know, in October, and we'll do our normal stuff, and we can add that onto the agenda, something to go for.
We are running now a bit behind on our agenda, and as per our discussion on our summer retreat, we were going to take a look at that when that happens. So the next item on school committee goal setting, Mr. Chairman, certainly your decision, but we started the discussion, perhaps we need to just table that to the next meeting.
I'd like to, just without Chuck here, I think, unfortunately, just now that's as good a time to bring it up as any, I will not be here at the next meeting, which Chuck knows he will be here, so we'll be fine with the four of you, so I would say...
Would you currate it till October?
Exactly. I think unfortunately, we're going to have to, but let's go ahead and do that. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, on to new business. Grade eight field trip to Pakmanadnoch. I got to tell you, I'm happy to see this on the agenda, because I was a little concerned that with Mr. Levine's departure from the district, he did so much beyond teaching eighth grade English Language Arts, and this was one of the things that he championed. And I've already had one very anxious seventh grader wondering about the DC trip, and I assume we'll get some information about that later, hopefully good, later in the year. But let's talk about the grade eight field trip to Pakmanadnoch.
Can't be a challenge, that technology. Just before you start here, just a quick comment.
Go ahead.
I think my leadership team's a little bit paranoid, because I found a program, software program, it's a walkie-talkie program, and once you subscribe to it, doesn't matter where you're at, as long as you're online and enabled, three in the morning, I could say hi to them. So I'm looking forward. Poor John Harrington was one of the test subjects with me, and it was quite comical. And my oldest son made the mistake of signing in late last night, and about three o'clock today, I thought, I wonder if it works up in Toronto? So I pushed the button, and lo and behold, he just jumped right out of his chair, because his dad was just there in presence.
Ooh, parenting tool. I'm going to have to check that one out.
Principal Wrangell's a little paranoid now that I'm playing games with software.
Some of us are already hearing his voice in our head anyway, so it's not going to be that different, quite honestly.
Constant vigilance.
So, Chairman Fontana, you stole my intro.
No, sorry.
Yeah, it's all right. I was going to say that, you know, anytime you have people who are in the organization for a long period of time leave, you know, it's a daunting task to hire quality people anytime, but then you really have to replace the institutional history in programs to the best of your ability. And so, yeah, Mr. Levine had supported a lot of programs. So Ms. Beth Morgan, who is our eighth grade history teacher, has stepped up as the eighth grade team leader this year, and she's the now member of our leadership team at the middle school representing the eighth grade, and she's picked up the Pakmanadnoch trip, has also picked up a couple of other things. And Ms. Valerie Finity, who's our science teacher, Dr. Finity is taking over the Washington DC trip, which is a huge, huge task. And so you guys are well in tune with the fact that we're doing a massive curriculum update in science. She has a ton of work on her plate, and on top of that, has volunteered to do this because she's had her own children come through the program and enjoy those trips as well, and just, you know, knows that it has to be done well. So I'd like to publicly thank both of those people for stepping up, and I'm sure the rest of the eighth grade team is going to continue to pick up some of that work. So Ms. Morgan could not be here tonight, so she did write up a little blurb for me that I told her I would read. So she said that the eighth grade would like to take a trip to Pakmanadnoch in Miller State Park in New Hampshire on October 3rd to take part in the hawk count, a nationally, national tally of raptors as they migrate to the south. Pakmanadnoch is preferred because the hawk count has experts at the summit who help the kids find clusters of birds riding thermals and explains the migration to the kids. This is our first interdisciplinary unit of the year. In E L A, the students read portions of Silent Spring and discuss the start of the environmental movement and the destruction of bird populations in the 20th century. In science, they study the forms and functions of raptors. In math, they manipulate the data collected and create graphs. The trip also fosters health, P E and team building, because if you've ever done this trip, it's a little bit of a walk up the hill. trip, it's a little bit of a walk up the hill. And in the past, it has been a very successful trip. We also prefer Pacmanadnock because it has a road to the top, so any student is able to participate, even if they are unable to hike. We regularly station a chaperone at the top in the event that a student needs to ride down for injury or illness or other reasons. And I have not done this trip before, and so I've already marked this in my calendar, because this is one of the things that we've done at the school that I really like to do. So I'm looking forward to going this year, and we're just looking for the school committee blessing to once again partake in this.
Because this is an out-of-state field trip, it does require a motion and approval by the school committee, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the Pacmanadnock trip on 3 October 2014.
Second, all right, any discussion?
How long has the trip been going on?
At least, at least nine years, because we vote on this every year, I've been out of the school committee. Yeah.
That's a cool trip.
Double digits.
It's a great kickoff for the eighth grade, kind of that whole coming together thing, and it's their, it's their last year in the building, and they make a big transition. So this kind of kicks off for them what's going to be a pretty spectacular year in terms of the DC field trip and then graduation and going out of high school.
Yeah, I mean, when you talk about nice capstone events, we have a lot of them in the eighth grade, and this kind of starts the year, and the trip to DC ends the year. So it's an important milestone for these guys.
You know, and the other part I like, you know, is making sure that there's a strong connection to the curriculum that we're doing here, and it'd be nice if we got, again, like a student-led readout of the, of the trip when it's done.
All right, I will take a vote. All those in favor, the motion is made?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Excellent, thank you, enjoy the trip.
Thank you.
All right, warrant authorization.
I'm going to turn that over to Steve. Information's in your package, and it's a process that we do every year, with the exception of online signing off that we're going to be moving into in the near future.
So basically, the town regulations and the bylaws say that a school committee requires less than majority vote for warrants. You need to vote and approve that. For accounts payable warrants, we require, school committee requires three signatures, so that's not necessary, but you do only, we do only ask for one signature for payroll, so you do need, you do need to vote just to authorize that one payroll signature. It's that simple. You have in your packets the information and suggested motion.
You got it? I was going to make it up, but if you said the word, I'll find it.
I have it, I can show it.
Oh, here it is. Would the school committee vote to authorize following, following required number of signatures for payrolls as one signature?
Second.
All right, motions are made, and second, is there any discussion? This is basically a housekeeping.
Right, it's just a housekeeping, to comply with the town bylaws.
Exactly, and we've been doing this, again, very long time, so. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right.
Do we have to vote the particular individual for payroll, or is that?
No, we don't have to vote anybody, we just really want to appoint someone to sort of have that responsibility. I'll do it, I mean, I'm in Littleton every day, so.
Okay.
As the chair, I'm kind of going to be going in there to talk to Kelly, so I have no problem.
As long as the town accountants know is that they're only looking for one authorized.
Right. It can be anybody, it doesn't have to be me. So if anybody's in there, and you'll see them running out and grabbing it, showing it to you, waving it under your nose, sign it, feel free.
And you can, it's there for anybody to review, so.
Exactly. All right, excellent. All right, superintendents reporting.
Personnel update, excuse me, is included in your package. It's reflective of changes that have happened since June, and we've had a number of staff changes this year. Are there any questions on that sheet? Item two, just a general update, I think we've covered that fairly well this evening in terms of our September start. It was a very smooth start. Our students quickly settled into the routines within their classrooms, and there was no downtime. First day back, they were engaged in learning in all of our schools, and it was just a real pleasure to see, because it was pretty hot. And it certainly was a, was a test of endurance, especially on the second floor at Shaker Lane. That's a pretty hot area when it's hot outside, so I'd like to commend the staff and the students. Our students were ready to get back. They had smiles on their face even during that week of hot weather, so a great start-up. School enrollment, again, the official enrollment doesn't happen until October 1st, but I always like to know right away what's going on, so I've included an enrollment sheet in your package. We had some turnover of students this year, and what kind of surprised me is I thought our enrollment was going to be up more than it was, but we had people relocating, et cetera. But what we did have in some schools is a redispersment of students, so it wasn't as if the students moved in, we're replacing the slots that were created by students moving out. So we have a few more students in grade five that we're watching that class size very closely, and Principal Sidlo and I are going to continue having discussions, and we may come back with a recommendation for some additional assistance. We're not sure yet, we just have to wait until the end of September and see what's happening and talk to our staff. When we look at Shaker Lane, our kindergarten class, especially in the afternoon, was a little larger than we've seen in the past. What's happening, though, is there's a trend in this community for parents to opt into full-day kindergarten, and it's increasing dramatically from even last year to this year. So that's something that I would like you to be aware of as a school committee. If we could swing it financially, I would love to see us have full-day kindergarten and subsidize it at the district level. So something on my wish list, so to speak, as we move forward. In the end, though, at Shaker Lane, we had 433 students last year, we have 430 this year, so we're down three students. That may change by the end of September, though. Russell Street School, we had 350, 350 students last year, we are at 356, so we're up six students. Middle School, last year we had 377 students, and we're at 366 students, so a drop of 11. And High School, we had 439 students last year, and we're currently at 452, so we're up 13. For a total gain in our district of plus five at this point in time. Any questions?
Can you just define for us what out-of-district represents? Is it charter and?
No.
It's just people that have left public education?
Out-of-district, that out-of-district category refers to students that have accommodations that we feel can't be met within our district.
Okay, all right, so you're talking about kids that are our kids.
Out-of-district.
Okay, so not people leaving to go to private school or charter.
No, no.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
May I ask a question?
No.
So, and this report's not the one for it, but, you know, we're, how do we get a picture of the total number of school-age kids in Littleton and the breakdown of which ones have opted to private school, in homeschooling, and out-of-district public schools?
We do that every year, but we don't actually have good information until around January. And one of the challenges we have, excuse me, is it's not mandatory reporting to the home district if they're going to other schools. So we try to capture as many as we can, but there hasn't been a year since I've been here that there haven't been students that haven't been reported to us, but it does give us an idea in terms of where the flow is.
Because it'd be nice to see like a summary of.
We have done that at least two out of the three years, usually in January.
I think DSE, DESE also has a report, I think I stumbled upon that last year at some point, that did a breakdown by town of how each, each district does that, of school-aged children, and then also private schools and out-of-district placement and things like that.
Yeah, because I know, like, last year you gave us a report of all the different schools, kids, you know, parents had placed them in, and I'm just looking more for just like a.
A summation.
A four-line summary, because, you know, it's, you lose track of how many kids are actually in Littleton.
Right. We can work on that for, you know, January meeting.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the data's really available.
The only thing I would caution on the comment Alex just made is, I would question whether DESE is any better than we are at knowing for sure who's in private schools, unless they are literally asking every private school for every enrollment and knowing by town which kids are in there. If they're not, if they're sort of just doing an effort, which is, you know, worthwhile, and can, you know, materially they might be right there, but it might not be the exact number, just, you know. Any report, you just got to know what the source is of the data before you're really taking it.
My guess is that they get their data from our October 1st data dump with them, because I believe it's a tool within DART, the District Analysis Reviewing Assistance Tools, but my, my question about the enrollment here, the fifth grade class, it's a little small, is that what you were referring to? Because usually we talk about keeping an eye on class size when it gets too big?
No, yeah, and it, numbers can be so deceiving. Russell Street doesn't deploy their staff evenly from grade to grade, so they deploy fewer staff in grade five with our projected enrollment. And we had a few more students register in that grade. So we're, we're on the cusp, but, I mean, I've been preaching this for two years now, that we're on the higher end of our acceptable class sizes, and we just have to be very, very careful with that. And we're, we're just, and this isn't statistically proven, this is, this is a lot of years of experience of being an administrator. You reach a level, and you look at the demographics, and you know you have that gut feeling that you're almost tipping that balance. So in grade five, I just want to monitor that situation with the staff and the principal, I'm sure that they have the support that they have. However, I won't be recommending that we add another halftime teacher, because it's not the right thing to do. Our kids are settled, our parents are settled with the teachers that they have, to try to pull kids from all four, four or five classrooms and redistribute them, this isn't a good thing to do. So it would be more educational ed tech assistance or something like that, if we need it. We really need to tease out those demographics and keep checking in with the staff for the next four weeks and see how comfortable they're feeling.
So even though the number numerically is lower than the other classes around it, it's the matter of the level of staffing and the type of educational and classroom environments that we're looking for in the fifth grade that is possibly, potentially approaching that point?
Very true.
Thank you.
And the only other strain is kindergarten program, because we have more students staying for the afternoon program, so Rich and I are watching that closely. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at nine for further discussions, so. FY14 budget year-end in your package, you have the FY14 budget broken down by cost center, and I'm going to turn that over to Steve to run you through that.
Sure, so you have three pages in the packet, one page was just a summary memo from me outlining where we ended the appropriated budget with, and also that had circuit breaker activity and school choice activity and ending balances, so you could see where we were at the, as of June 30 with those balances. If you look at the class center report for FY14, we did have some areas, some specific class centers that we over, over expended in. We were able to make up those deficiencies in other areas of the budget and other class centers. I also handed out, at the beginning of the school committee meeting, a one-page summary that listed those deficit class centers and an explanation of what happened in those areas. I'd be more than glad to go over that by line or answer questions at the pleasure of the school committee, it's up to you. I also included, the third page that I included in the packet is, again, for your information, it's FY15, so the current year, so you can see the budget for FY15 and the expenditure so far. It's really early in the year, so it's tough to make any predictions, predictions at this point in time. So FY14, we did spend all but $170 of the appropriated funds. We, we actually tried to spend all of the money, not even give a penny back, but this just happened to be some, probably some hours that we had forecasted at the end of the year and budgeted for, and assumed were going to come in, and then people just didn't put the hours in. So that's why we had some money left, it's very, very minimal. Again, it's up to the pleasure of the school committee, I'll go over by cost center if you want to go over the deficit and the explanations that I provided.
So I'll, I'll let everybody else decide if they want to talk about that. For me personally, the numbers, the overages are not material, the explanations here make sense. I would like to say that that is what we, we expect, and what we, as a school committee, what we've said is, is we don't want intra-year transfers within accounts. We're going to run over, we let it run over, obviously we want to know whether we're running over, we want to know why it's running over, we want to know that these amounts aren't concerning to me, but if they were bigger, we would want to know what would we be doing to make sure that it doesn't happen again. But we, we don't expect for, for overages, but when they do happen, this is what we expect to see, is we let it run over, we close it out, obviously it'll get balanced out in the long term, but in the short term, we just want to see it happen, and we don't want the administration just moving money around just so that they never show us a red number. Red numbers are okay, given the correct circumstances, and that's why I want to see.
Right, and that's the approach we've taken for a number of years, is we do not come to school committee with a lot of budget transfers so that it doesn't muddy the waters when it comes to budgets.
Just one question, so I, I get where, you know, I'm not concerned about the deltas there. The only one, as I look across, it looks like a lot of special ed was $100,000 overbudgeted? Is that the way I interpreted?
Well, under-expended, let me put it that way, so.
Under-expended, there. Was that just because of the circumstances of what services we needed, or was there something in the?
The bigger picture of rolling in circuit breaker, et cetera.
So by rolling in the additional circuit breaker money, we needed, we didn't end up expending that funding?
Correct.
Yeah, but we also, when we know we're going over in certain areas, we have to find the money in different areas to cover those expenditures. So it was part of a master plan as, as we were moving forward, we had that flexibility to make it happen.
I like the precision that we have here. It's not a perfect art, but that $170 bucks, the fact that we show where we're going over, show where we're under, and it all, it worked out in the end, I think that's a good indicator of our financial approach to things. My only comment would be the next time you have $170 bucks, let's have a pizza party.
I wish we could. I think $170 out of $60 is pretty good, so.
All right, any other questions on the budget numbers? All right, so before we do educator-focused elements, is that a quick thing?
Yes, it is, but we can do something different.
No, I want to just go ahead.
And I'm sorry, one last comment on the budget, I apologize. I will come to school committee at a later school committee, and Darrell, to answer your question, I will present the final revolving fund balances and all the activities, so I will come, I just wanted to mention that.
Well, I just, because it's the beginning of the year, wanted to include our focus elements that we used last year, and we're going to use them for two years in review. It's important for you to know that that doesn't mean those are the only elements that we look at in the evaluative process, and the more we get into the educator evaluation elements, there is far more overlapping than appears when you just look at the elements by themselves, so. The more we get into it, they should have simplified the number of elements that they had, I'll put it that way. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and in our district, we're, we focus on 10 to 11 elements per category, whether you're a teacher or an administrator, central office, et cetera. That has worked extremely well, and I really attribute that focus to helping us move forward in terms of educational pedagogy and also making it manageable and more meaningful, rather than a summit of evaluation, it's become an opportunity for us to dialogue in a professional, a professional culture and help our staff move forward.
All right, to wrap up with the superintendent's report?
You go.
Interested citizens. You just want to say hi?
Of course, always.
It's been all summer.
Yeah, I know.
If I have to sit through these, no. I'm the only person who comes, what's that?
We're here.
Actually, I have one question about, you know, the discussion for the MCAS park. The only question I had that came to mind was, because it appears, and I'm sure that this is the way that it's moving, that it will head online at some point in time, do we feel that we have what we will need, or at least a good understanding of what we will need, when, because I don't think it's if, I think it's when, that the standardized testing moves to an online testing? Because as you know, everywhere outside of the public system does all of their testing online, everywhere, any type of. online, everywhere, any type of, you know, testing for nurses and lawyers and everything else. So we know it's heading in that direction. What will we need to make sure that we are prepared for that? I know there's so many facets to it. Obviously, there's the hardware, then there's the being able to do it, and as well as getting the students used to doing it. And that would have been the only thing, I think, that would really be beneficial to potentially moving to Park, is just going through that process. But obviously, if we don't even have the hardware that we would need or be able to do that. But I think in general, you're right, there was a discussion about how that will change, how it will affect the students, and getting used to it. Just going through that process may have been beneficial, and that was my question.
I'll let Kelly speak to it in a second. I know that we, I know that we did do it online, so we've done it once already. I think we had a cludge together a little bit, and it was, and not just us, every district that uses it, there were glitches and bumps in the introduction of the technology aspect of it. But I know that we've had, that was, but wasn't a focal point tonight, but it has been part of our discussion of, you know, are we prepared? We don't think that we are. We do know what the requirements are, and we're striving towards it, and Kelly can speak to that. But I have a quick, did you take the bar online?
We did not take the bar online.
So the bar's not online yet?
But, but law school is in our K.A. field, it's frustrating.
I heard it's a dying field?
I have a job, so.
CBA exam is online.
Sorry, Kelly, go ahead, if you want to put a little more detail.
Those are good questions, Lisa. We've been fortunate, because we've had a solid technology plan in place, and the first thing that we really had to do, and we've completed that task, is update our infrastructures. Doesn't matter what hardware you have, unless you have a robust infrastructure to handle it. So we're at that point. We have the capacity to handle the devices that we need. We've been moving into acquisition of versatile hardware, Chromebooks, for example, that are inexpensive and they're workhorses in terms of durability. So we're not in a bad spot. We just need to continue with our technology plan to acquire more hardware. We can do it. Scheduling is a little difficult at times, and I'd like to minimize that task in the future in terms of having more, more Chromebooks available for testing. Our teachers are becoming proficient in online testing with the adoption of NWEA this year. Our students in grades two to eight will still be doing online tests, so they're going to develop that skill set. So I feel really good about where we're at at this point in time. With our middle school and high school, BYOD, I'm hoping in two years, our schools will look a lot different than they are. But right now, we have hundreds of devices at the middle school and high school being logged in every day. So it's really interesting to watch that capacity of device activation grow within those two schools.
Great. Yeah, I mean, I think that that's important to let the public know, you know, that that is part of our plan to move towards that, because I do think.
It definitely is a plan in place, yeah.
It's something that.
Like you said, it's a question of when is the plan realized, not if we have a plan and if we're going to realize it. It's just a question of where, how fast do we need to go? Part of it is resources, budget, and then part of it is, what are the requirements? If the requirements start to pick up, then we're going to have to focus on it. So we've talked about it.
I realize I did misspeak. Half of the bar exam, the second day was actually. But it's one thing that we moved in advance. And, yeah, I think we, you know, I get the point you're going at, and Alex and Mike both sort of touched on it. Hopefully, if we're going to take this wait-and-see year, you know, we ought to be the most prepared school district when it comes to it, and we're ready to take it. So maybe we could get in the winter or in the spring, sort of a preparedness check-in and how, just so it does, it's not something that leaves the back of our mind, you know, it's something that we're actively thinking.
Sure, no, we can, we can do that. One thing that really has helped is having a Mac platform, because the stability is there, and going to a PC platform, I certainly wouldn't be speaking the way in tonight, to be honest with you. It would be a very different district.
Well, and that's good to hear. Like I said, I really just wanted to hear, you know, I believed that was the situation, but I thought it's, you know, it's good to say that so that, you know, our district is aware, or the parents and students and, you know, that we feel comfortable that regardless of what we do this year, because I think it's important to not be, to do what you just did, you know, the discussion, make the decision based on what makes sense, but that we are also continuing to recognize that if this is the wave of the future, and that we are trying to move along with that wave, that we are continuously thinking about how to best, you know, not be behind it, but to ride it, and be prepared, because that, you know, again, I mean, college, a lot of them, they're all, they're all moving online and being prepared, and we think, you know, we are doing that, but hearing that we'd be able to do that for the standardized testing when it happens is what I wanted to hear.
And we did a lot of, I think, of this thing last year in particular. We did, you know, if we look at where we were at the beginning of last year to where we are, where we were at the end of last year, there was a huge change in the number of devices we had online, and also our ability to have them online. And so I think we're continuing to do that work, but there was a lot of that happened last year.
Yeah, and we officially adopted the SD standards, which are international technology standards, so that every school, at the end of the highest grade, we do an assessment of the skill sets that our students have compared to the SD standards. So we've come a long way, and as Alex pointed out, I remember beginning of last year at Russell Street, our newest school, didn't have a network configuration that could support park testing, but we were able to switch things around and through the talents of our technology staff, create a network from the one we had, so.
And the only other CPAC is alive and well. We had our first meeting on Tuesday evening, thank you, Darrell. And we're trying to plan a great next meeting next month. I'm just going to give a little preemptive, you know, we're hoping to do a little meet and greet with some of the newer staff, special ed staff, as well as possibly some other interesting things. So I'll keep you informed the next meeting as to what evolves before, which would be the second Tuesday of October, which is October 14th, I believe, is our next scheduled meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other interested citizens? All right, subcommittee reports, I think this is going to be quick, PMBC?
There was, we were expending some money focused on the Shaker Lane school that we voted in a town meeting in May. Nothing noteworthy.
Budget subcommittee, we have nothing. We will start to set up a calendar and get ourselves off the ground in the next few weeks. Policy subcommittee?
I need to get started on them.
All right, we have one more piece of business. I thought we were going to do it at the beginning of the meeting. I thought PJ Avella was invited and was going to come be with us, but he decided to go be with his new friends instead. He was all friends, he was at the Board of Selectmen thing. We do want to, talked about having Mike Mazzoni take his place, so we just wanted to have a brief presentation. PJ Avella was elected to the school committee three times. He and I were elected together three times. The first time we ran, there were five candidates. One guy bailed early, and, long story short, I out polled everybody, and PJ and I won, but I out polled everybody. The second time we ran, we were unopposed, and I knew I wasn't going to get every vote that he got, because my wife told me that she was going to vote for him and not for me, which I'm pretty sure she did, but I figured, well, you know, I out polled him last time, and we're running unopposed. He won. He out polled me, and I was like, well, okay, I know why, because there were two of us running, and so it didn't really matter, and he's an Avella and I'm a Fontanella, so he was on the top. So I figured, you know, some people just didn't bother. And then the third time, there were three running for two, was me and PJ, and there was some young whippersnapper, oh, yeah, hey, Alex, how are you? That's right. And PJ kicked our butts. I mean, he totally out polled us. At that point, I realized that the electorate in Littleton was getting it right, because if it were up to me, I would have voted for him multiple times if I could. PJ set a tone right out of the gate when the two of us were elected. He participated in eight budgets over the course of his years. He was on the PMBC when the middle school came online. That's a whole nother set of meetings. It's a big commitment to be on the PMBC. He negotiated three LEA contracts. I did two of those with him, but he did the third one with Chuck. And that's a lot of work, and it was significant work in those three contracts, because it was getting us through extremely difficult budget times, and it was a credit to his leadership that we were able to meet with the LEA and negotiate contracts that allowed us to meet significant budget challenges, and I think we were able to mitigate the negative impacts that some, a lot of other districts dealt with. So he was a key leader in that regard. He was the chairman for three years, which, again, is another huge commitment when you're on the school committee. Requires you to set the agenda with the chairman, and you're the point person for emails and contact with other boards and things like that. So, you know, most of us, when we decide to run for something like this, it's pretty obvious, if we're older, we have kids in the district, and, you know, we have a vested interest, immediate interest in what's going on. Some of the younger guys, they're able to remember, you know, they're just fresh out of school, and they're vested in what's going on. You know, PJ didn't have kids in the district. He clearly didn't graduate recently. But, you know, he wanted to be involved, and Littleton benefited tremendously from his willingness to be involved. But it was more than him just saying, oh, I'm going to run for election and get elected, and then whatever. You know, he clearly set a tone for all of us. I know that when I got elected, I was like, I don't really know what I was getting myself into, and when I saw how hard he was going to work, I was like, okay, well, you know, he threw the gauntlet down, the rest of us are going to have to keep up. And I know it made me a better school committee member by virtue of having him get elected when I did. So we just wanted to recognize his eight years on the school committee. You know, we were able to fill the gap when he left. The good news is, is that he didn't go far. He's with the Board of Selectmen. I think that's going to have a very positive impact on the, on the school committee in terms of, we've had a good relationship with the other boards, but having him there and being able to speak directly on his experiences with the school committee over the last eight years, now as a representative on the Board of Selectmen, can only be beneficial to the school district. So PJ, I'd like to have you come up and just be acknowledged. And I would like to say that we wish you and your fellow Board of Selectmen members the best of luck. We have here two things. We have a framed photograph of the first high school in Littleton. I looked carefully, you're not in the picture, and I realized this was in Littleton and not Rhode Island, so maybe there's one like this, so you're there. And then we have a plaque recognizing, presented to Paul J. Avella, in recognition and appreciation for your dedication and commitment to our students, 2006 to 2014. Thanks, Matt, I appreciate it. Last words, do you want me to speak?
First off, thank you very much, all of you, and the administrators also. Kelly, you're over there, thanks. And indeed, I will make this short, I promise you that. I will say I had the good fortune to serve with some very, very fine people on the school committee here, and then an even better fortune, because it matters for our children more importantly, the superintendents we had, the principals we had, the teachers, and the parents, and the staff. The schools in Littleton are as good as they are because of you folks here in the audience here, not because of the school committee. School committee, we just get to sit up here and pontificate, as you see, more than once. But you're the, you know, the proverbial rubber meeting the road where the kids are. You're the ones they need, and you're the ones that serve them. Please go back to the teachers, the staff, and thank them again for me, because it is they who make the difference for our children. So I applaud you guys.
All right, do we need an executive session?
No, we're good.
Excellent. I will take a motion, unless anybody else has any business?
Two things. As if I always need the last word.
That's okay.
But that message that I talked about earlier on, it was, one of our tech people got back to me tonight, it was sent from Mike Lynn. So it's in reference to athletic fees, so it's legitimate, so we're okay. And we do have a joint DOS FinCon meeting coming up. And it is Monday, September 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. And we'll have that confirmed, but that was on that list that we were given the other night with our joint meeting. So again, Monday, September 22nd, 7:00 p.m.
I'm okay for that.
And I might not be.
Okay, just check your calendars, but minimally I'll be there. If it is a joint meeting, it would be good if we could get a quorum, just so in case there's anything actionable, you have to stall out. So check with Chuck and check, just make sure we're okay, all right?
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, seconded. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in two weeks.